Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining the Selectmen's Meeting on December 21st, 2015. Would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just, eternal.
Couple of announcements. Town Hall offices will be closed Thursday, December 24th, and Thursday, December 31st, in observance of Christmas and New Year's holidays. The Town Hall will also be closed Wednesday evening, but the Building Inspector will hold office hours from 2:30 to 4:30 on this Wednesday. That's it for announcements. And the Board also wishes everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants. July 20th, 7:00 p.m., Executive Session. This is just being released now. And I was the only one absent, so I'll be abstaining.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of July 20th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m., Executive Session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have September 21st, 2015, at 7:00 p.m., another executive session, just released.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 21st, 2015, meeting at 7:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Executive Session, just released, October 5th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. And I was absent for that one, so I'll be abstaining.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 5th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, December 7th, 2015, at 6:45 p.m.
We've got 6:30.
Whoops. I must have pulled it over. All right, sorry. 6:30 Executive Session. Now it was, uh...
Mr. Barrett, you were absent.
And I was absent for that.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of December 7th, 2015, at 6:30.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Now, we have December 7th, at 6:45 p.m., regular meeting, not an executive session. And I was absent, so I'll abstain from this one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, December 7th, at 7:00 p.m., and all were present.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of December 7th, 7:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I do have one warrant this evening.
Okay.
And these are the payroll deductions for the payroll period ending December 17th, and the amount is $5,242.29.
Is there a motion to accept? Is red?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have an invited guest, Brian Murphy, who, from Colonial Power, who could not be here tonight, so his associate partner is Mr. Sullivan, who is here on behalf.
Hey, this is...
Good evening.
Hello.
So we just need to vote to approve. We don't need to vote to have a signature. We don't need a signature. So we need to vote to accept and approve the aggregation agreement as it was posted for public review.
Does someone have anything?
No, I don't. I believe it was posted.
It was.
For the quiet time. If there are any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer. Everything seems to be in order with this and the tuna test of it being posted. We can go to the DPU and start the process.
The motion to sign the agreement.
Well, we don't have to sign. No signature. Just to approve.
To approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will get you a certified copy of the minutes of this meeting with that vote as soon as we're done.
Yeah, that was an update. It says on the agenda to sign. Mr. Sullivan made it aware that we don't really have anything to sign.
You're in good shape?
Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas. All right. Next, we have a report from Lisa LaRue. She sent the spreadsheet and also a short letter. Our collection rates continue to be successful. As of December 16th, the collection rate for the fiscal year 2015, real estate taxes is 98 percent, and the collection rate for 2015 personal property is at 100 percent. That's awesome. As of December 16th, the collection rate for the fiscal year 2016, first and second quarter, real estate taxes at 93 percent, and the collection rate for the 2016 first and second quarter, personal property taxes at 100 percent. Third and fourth quarter tax bills will be mailed out by the end of December and will be due February 1st and May 2nd. Remember, notices will be placed in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette. Notices will also run on the Town Cable, excuse me, on the Town Cable. Kelly and Ryan, the Town's Deputy Collector, continues to print and mail out all our motor vehicle excise, bills, and demands. This service is free of charge. The only cost to the Town is for the postage. Marcia, the Assistant Collector, continues to be a great asset to the Treasurer Collector's Office. Tax title counts, I have provided, I have provided a copy of the tax title list of 2000, October 31st, 2015. Unknown properties total, $215,445.58. On, excuse me, unknown property, excuse me, unknown property, 109-20-23-0, which is 92 Hill Street, is presently in land court, the last step in the foreclosure process. Unknown property, 104 AO, 121 AO, and 127 AO do not exist anymore. They cannot be removed from the tax list without DOR approval. The Assessors' Office is in the process of obtaining approval. Unknown property, 121-46-0, 20, the Prairie, the Prater Street, is actually at Town of Millville, Town of Millville property, not an unknown property. The Assessors' Office is in the process of obtaining approval from the DOR to remove it from the tax title list. In January, I'll be advertising properties for tax-taking and will be recording the instruments of taking with the Worcester Registry of Deeds. I presently have, I presently have payment agreements for four property owners on the tax title list. Since December 2014, one tax title property has been paid off and redeemed. There are 13 properties on the tax title list that qualify as land of low-value properties. I'm in the process of having those properties declared land of low value by the Department of Revenue. They must review the, and approve each property. As of 2015, a property must be valued at less than $20,920 to be considered for approval. As soon as the DOR gives their approval, these properties can then be sold without going through the long and expensive process of land court. Excuse me. As soon as several properties receive approval by the DOR, I can schedule a land-of-low-value auction with the Town's Tax Title Attorney. These small properties are usually purchased by the butters of two of them. And that's from Lisa LaRue, Treasurer Collector. So, seems like she's got a good handle on all of that. That's it for Board, Committees. So we have public forum, first public forum. None. Correspondence, we have, uh, the Town, on behalf, this is from Helen Coffin, from, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and this is, I'm sorry, this is to do with the annual Town Report for 2015. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I am asking that each Department Board Committee and Commission prepare its annual report and submit as a word document by email to the The deadline for submission is 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, February 11th, 2016. Each report should be prepared using the following format, blank white document, no letterhead, please, no page numbering, headers or footers, top and bottom margins one inch, left and right margins 1.25 inches, justify the right. Font, New Times Roman, 12-point. In addition, please be sure to spell-check your document before you submit it, and please make every effort to properly align all columns and tabs. Thank you. And that's all I have for correspondence. And no appointments and resignations tonight. Executive Secretary's Report.
Yep. Very two quick items here, both with respect to the Millville Elementary School. I just wanted to let the Board know that, as requested at the last meeting, I did send word over to Superintendent Himmelberger inviting the Blackstone Millville School Committee to a Selectmen's Meeting to discuss the situation of the playground, and I have not heard back from them yet.
Okay.
I did include in my email that we understood it was the holiday season, if they needed to put that off until after the first of the year. I was sure the Board would be fine with that, because I wasn't sure when they were going to be meeting, and I assumed they would have to meet and vote on it before they came here. So I have not heard back from him yet. I will follow up with him next week. And then the second item is the MES Water. I received word from Northeast Water on December 9th that there was a break in the water line going from the building to the well.
Mm-hmm.
Then I received word on the 11th that it was repaired with little site disturbance. The water tank was chlorinated, and the water was replenished, and everything seems to be in order up there at this time.
Good. Excellent. Great. I have one thing that I did, uh, excuse me. What's that? Oh, yeah, thanks. Can't get rid of it. Oh, boy. Okay. Uh, there is one thing I did want to go over, and as soon as I find it, I'll go to it. All right. Next, we have old business. We have the Centennial signing contracts.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess according to legal, we can...
Yeah.
...allow the committee to appoint.
The committee itself to sign.
Committee itself to...
Okay. That will work. I think the committee itself will probably still send over the fireworks, because it's going to be lengthy.
No, that's fine.
And it's probably standard, but it's probably something that should go through legal, just for whatever reasoning.
Uh-huh.
I mean, lighting all some big fireworks should.
Yeah.
So we're probably going to send that one over, but for all the other stuff, if we can just get a motion, that would be great.
All right. So, motion to give the Centennial Committee approval to sign any contracts that have to do with the year-long Centennial Celebration?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the ladder truck. And Chief, if you'd like to speak on it, you may, or I'll just read your, okay. I respect, uh, dear Chairman Barrett, I respectfully request the Board of Selectmen to declare our 1980 Seagrave Ladder Truck as surplus and be sold through the surplus protocols. Unfortunately, the value of the ladder truck is difficult to assess, but I would anticipate the value of the truck be no more than $5,000. Because we no longer have this piece of apparatus, we do not need to lease the garage at 268 Chestnut Hill Road. I requested the Board give an immediate 90-day notice and terminate the lease prior to the April 15th payment to Donald and Kathleen Frost. Respect sincerely, Ronald Landry, Millville Police Chief. So, now, we spoke about this the last meeting, but we couldn't vote because it wasn't on that.
You need two motions here, one for...
One to declare the truck as surplus, and then two to terminate the lease agreement.
And this would come off the road at the end of this year, or as soon as this is signed?
As soon as it's signed, appetizing, so.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do the first motion to declare the 1980 Seagrave Ladder Truck as surplus.
I'll second that.
And just to clarify, people that may have missed the last meeting, it's just basically unsafe for firefighters to climb the ladder at this point anymore. You know, it's at that time where, it could be today, it could be next year, the ladder could just collapse on, and we can't take that risk, so.
Thirty-five years old.
Yep. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we do have plenty of surrounding towns that do have ladders, and it's common practice for smaller towns that don't have it, that it's the mutual aid, that's where that comes into place, so we're still covered.
Motion for the Board to give an immediate 90-day notice to terminate the lease for the leased property.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, if we could have discussion just before the Board votes on that, I just want to clarify. I did give each member a copy of the draft letter, and I just want to clarify the Chief's intent on this. My understanding was that he was, that he was going to make the January 15th payment, but that would be the last one. So January 15th payment covers January, February, and March. So March 31st would be the last day. Okay. Because that's a little different. If you gave a 90-day notice, you'd be off by a few days, so.
Ninety days effective.
So if you just want to say March 31st, that's over 90 days, so that would be fine.
Yeah, so terminating as of...
As of mid...
And then we have till March 31st to clear our...
Correct.
That's fine. Excuse me, that's fine, yeah.
And Mr. Reposey, you've adjusted your motion to that effect. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the shed placement in the rear parking lot, and that's for the ATV that we would like to purchase. The Fire Department is looking to purchase for rescue services along the bike way and walkway. We've already had a couple of incidences where we needed medical attention down there. The only way down there is to drive the ambulance down, and then you got to back all the way back out. If we have some sort of a quad with a pickup body on the back, we can take the patient out to the ambulance much, much faster. And so, and it's not going to cost the Town any money, you know, there's a grant for it, so, so thank you to the Police and Fire Department for chasing these grants that helped us tremendously. Anyway, so, we just need to approve putting the shed behind the playground.
No issues?
No issue, right? Nothing. Double-checked with Assessors, the property lines and all that, so.
Motion to place the shed behind the playground.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business. So, the sad news is, Town Accountant, Town Council Services, I'm sorry, Accountant was the wrong thing, but Town Council Services, Patrini and Associates, sent us a letter that Barbara St. Andre will be leaving the firm and joining Koppelman and Page next So we need to vote if we'd like to leave Patrini and stick with Barbara St. Andre. We'd have to get her through Koppelman and Page, and they're perfectly okay with that, if that's our wish. If we'd like to table it and meet with Koppelman and Page, we can do that as well.
I would request that we speak with Lauren Himmelberger.
So if we could invite to our January 4th meeting, then we can make a decision at that point. Next, we have the Centennial Insurance.
Yep. There was some question as to insurance in regards to, it's going to come up with the fireworks, but that will be, I think, within itself, but there was a question in regards to, like, the 5K. So we're not going to be necessarily on Town property, but we will be within the, within the Town. So the question is, do we need to take out, like, a single-day insurance policy for those days, for, in the event that something does occur? It's my understanding that even if we had a day at the park, we could buy insurance just for that day.
Mm-hmm.
It's a small amount of money, but maybe well worth it in the long run, especially the 5K, we definitely going to want it.
Yeah.
So when twisted ankle falls down, you know, I mean, things happen.
Yep.
So I guess that's the question in regards to, do they have that? Should we be carrying that for those events that are coming up? I mean, our general little days in the park, but, you know, we're expecting a higher turnout for the actual 2016 events, and we just want to make sure that the Town is covered. So that was, that was all that was, I was asked to...
I think that's a good idea. A lot of firms that I do horse events for, for, actually purchase that one day.
Yeah, single-day insurance to cover the Town in case.
Even if it's from, say, 4:00 to 8:00, they just say from 4:00 to 8:00 on that day.
Yeah.
It's short money, too.
Right.
I would support a motion to...
Okay.
I'll second that, sure.
Second.
Yep.
So a motion to buy single-day insurance for each, each activity day that we have. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, Selectmen's Members Forum, we just had one item. On December 11th, Wensaker Call put an article on the front page about Millville reorganizing the Town Hall, which a lot of facts were incorrect, and so we sent, Wensaker Call, Helen sent Wensaker Call the corrections, and her base of the corrections was on agenda and meeting minutes of, of minutes that we've voted on and approved. And so the Wensaker Call, I'd like to thank them for reprinting on December 18th the article with the correct facts. So that was very professional of them to do such a thing, and we'd like to thank them for that. That's pretty much it, so. But all, so anybody that read the Septem, uh, September, sorry, December 11th article and hasn't read the 8th, December 18th article, please do, because the actual facts are in there. So, and that's it. Our next regular meeting is May, Monday, January 4th, at 7:00 p.m. And next, we'll do signatures, and of all the approved signatures that we voted on in this meeting, and I did remember, and I have, what else I wanted to talk about is January 4th, I was talking to Joe Layden about the Community Compact, and he'd like to be put on the agenda, his board, put on the agenda to be at the January 4th meeting. He just sent in three requests for Grafton, for the Community Compact, and, you know, he can help us, direct us, if we need any help from the Planning Board, to decide, you know, what to, what to grab, because he's already gone through it in Grafton, so he's pretty familiar with it now, and he'd, you know, his board would like to help us out on that, because it's, it's easy money if we go grab it, so. So if you guys are good with that, we'll invite them on January 4th.
Mr. Chairman...
Two of their members are here now, so you're invited.
On that note, I should also mention, I met last week with Mark Reel.
Yes.
I think I'm pronouncing that right.
Yeah.
Who's now working for Senator Fatman.
Mm-hmm.
And we had some discussion about the Community Compact and what we'd applied for, et cetera.
Yep.
But he was very helpful. If there's anything the Board needs, you know, he said feel free to reach out to him.
Mm-hmm.
So we had a great, great discussion, and I think he'll certainly be an asset to the Senator's team.
Yep.
This is all has to do with economic development plan?
Yep. And whatever, you know, any of the resigned areas, anything, we can, there's so many things that we can, you know, and...
Where do we stand on access to 181 Central Street?
We sent Town Council a copy of the plan that CMRPC had drawn up, it was a year or two ago. She was going to forward that to PNW's attorney, Charles Rennick, and then get back to me after the first of the year. But she seemed to think that they were going to be very amenable to allowing us access and even to creating a new access point from Central Street.
And that's something Joe Layden said would be something to apply for, if that's our intent to do something of that nature.
If you're going to develop that property, you know, you need an access that doesn't require...
Right.
Right.
You can get Community Compact money to do that, or to pay somebody to design it, or whatever, you know, whatever we need to use it for.
We think we could get some help from PNW as well.
Yeah. And if they can help us with the construction of it, or the design of it, or some, because it is in their contract to allow us access to that. So if they want to shut that off and use it for emergency fire access only, they're going to have to give a little bit somewhere. And I'm sure they're not about to ruffle feathers, you know, they got, they got to keep lots of towns happy, you know, so. So that's it.
Is the workshop scheduled for...
I don't have anything scheduled. We haven't received the...
We still don't have the report?
Right, no. She said by the end of the month, hopefully.
That's what she said last month. All right. So we're still waiting for the DOR report.
Wait for it and review it.
Yeah. Wait, get it, review it, and then we'll have a workshop.
They just put out Essex reports, 47 pages.
I read that.
So, right. Okay. So next, we'll do signatures, and then a adjournment. So next we'll do signatures and, uh, an energy. In the, uh, in the termination agreement,
Uh-huh.
was our vote to allow me to sign?
That was not in the vote, but I, I think it's fine for you to sign. That the board voted, so usually the chairman would sign. It's, it's a letter, it's not a contract, so.
So Jerry, while, while we're still here in the meeting, I, we all have that spreadsheet that you sent us, um, for the budget for different, different, uh,
Net spending percentage for schools.
So it's, I just mentioned that anybody want, want more detailed-
Yep.
This could give you a call or email or-
Yep.
I didn't know who G was.
Oh.
I didn't move the connection.
Apparently, I'd ask them.
Now that I know.
There's only one Jerry.
Well, it just said G, am I Garrett?
You, you, you understand that, right?
Yeah, I totally understand.
Yeah.
Sure, it gets to how much spending, you know, with, nobody's always spending, be it the M R O, if you, if you look at it in total.
Yeah, no.
And then some, some towns are-
Well, you know, we've got a couple of them, like, hot streets, and one of them, it's really, I mean, they've got a two-and-a-half meter long fence, if you're sure.
Yeah.
And they're already screaming at the top of their lungs, and yet if you look at that, they're like, uh, face ones that, that for, for spending over and above the foundation.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you guys do?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
One of the main concerns we had right now is health data. It's skyrocketing on us.
Really?
Sixteen percent.
Really?
Well, that's what they're calling for right now. We've ejected it, sent it back to one of the budget committee, we've had five meetings where, yeah, where they committed that, we've just, we've sent it back to them, so. I don't know, you know, you can, I'm rushing this so far. Problem is, it's experience rating.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had a couple unfortunate cases of, uh, if you know our pockets.
Yeah.
Uh, some unfortunate cases with, uh, cancers that have been really severe. And that goes with the three-year experience.
Yeah.
And that's what they, that's what they think, so.
That's why we have health-
No, the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah, for cancer, for cancer, right.
I'm like, now you've had a warrant.
And, you know, you've got to take it with a bet.
Yeah.
You've got years where it's been relatively, you know, four, three, four, five percent. Uh, this one, I would be a bad one. We've had a couple years in a row now, we've had some severe situations, uh, some folks up there, so they've been straight as any H's, severe cancer situations.
Why? Do they, do they have any idea what that's all about? No?
Uh, it's good. Yeah, I, no, I don't think, these people come from different towns all the way.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
You know what I mean? It's just a shame, because one of them is a young gal that, uh, I won't mention her name, but a young gal that has a, uh, taken a pony for a six and eight-year-old, but she's not gonna make it.
Oh.
She's a key administrator, like, you know, we're all here, awful. Kids, two little kids, awful, you know? So, trying to be the best we can.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, all set?
Motion for Jerry?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.